Paul Thompson. Is not here yet. Festerson is gone for the day. Gurnett.
Here.
Jaram. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just say that, you know, it's always difficult when we lose young people, especially under tragic circumstances, and I would just like to take a moment of silence to remember and shout out prayers, send up prayers for Clara Bender, the young lady who was killed in the explosion yesterday, and for Sam Foltz, probably going to be one of the premier punters in the Big Ten, so for them, if we could, we could have a moment of silence, I would appreciate it.
Councilmembers Thompson and Milton have entered the chambers. City Clerk Certified Publication Daily Record, official newspaper on July 22nd, no further appeal, council and regular city council meeting July 26, 2016, a current copy of openings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today, and as a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to turn off or silence any of your electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final rating plan board attachments, item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 1016 South 10th Street from Heavy Industrial District to Central Business District, property is also located within an ACI-1 PL area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, no lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Five is passed six to zero. Item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 601 South 13th Street from downtown Service District to Central Business District, property is also located within an ACI-1 PL area of civic overlay, importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion. Second, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Six is passed six to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to rezone property located at 2503 Arbor Street from General Industrial District to R4 Single Family Residential District, high density, A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded to approve item seven. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven is passed six to zero. Eight, nine, or one case, eight is ordinance to rezone property located at 3022 and 3024 South 20th Street from General Commercial District to Neighborhood Business District. Nine is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the neighborhood conservation and enhancement overlay district to incorporate into that district these properties. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers eight and nine are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Paul out in the audience there that have been watching over that property for many, many years, and I appreciate you keeping an eye on my grandfather.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve items nine and 10. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Who's eight and nine?
Eight and nine, I'm sorry.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight and nine are passed six to zero. Item number 10, ordinance to rezone property located east of 32nd and Webster Streets, intersection from R7 to medium density multifamily residential district to general office district and general office district two, general office district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, no lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven and twelve, or one case, 11 is ordinance to amend the existing parking overlay district in an R5 Urban Family Residential District located northeast of 40th and Pacific Street to approve the amended parking plan. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 12 is ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 40th and Pacific Street from R5 Urban Family Residential District to GO, General Office District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number is 11 and 12 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second. Second, there's no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Eleven and twelve are passed six to zero. Item 13, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-250 area of civic overlay district to incorporate in that district the property located at 7400 Western Avenue. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, been moved and seconded to approve item 13. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirteen is passed six to zero. Fourteen through eighteen is one, or one case. Fourteen is ordinance to rezone property located east of 204th Street and north of Belondo Parkway from R4 Single Family Residential District, high density, to DR, Development Reserve District. Fifteen to rezone to R4 Single Family Residential District, high density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Sixteen is resolution preliminary plat entitled The Villas of Piney Creek is hereby accepted. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And seventeen is the plat entitled The Villas of Piney Creek are hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eighteen is subdivision agreement with SID 579 is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers fourteen through eighteen are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Step to the microphone, please. If you would, sir, if you'd give us your name, address.
My name is Jim Tollison. I live at 20221 Pearl Circle in Elkhorn.
Thank you. And your testimony, your opposition?
Oh, okay. I talked to the developer, or his agent, four, five weeks ago, six weeks ago probably, and he never did get back with me. I was wondering about the trees, the dead trees that are on the back of the lot that butts to our property, and he was gonna get with us and tell us whether they were gonna put a fence up to separate the two entities, I guess you might say. And I was also wondering, who owns the land now? Does the new, is the new developer actually the owner now, or the guy up Edward Rose up in Wisconsin, does he still actually own the land? And who's responsible for mowing all the weeds? Because where my property comes up, I mow, and then I've got three feet high weeds right now that nobody's come for two months now to mow. That's all I was wondering.
Okay, you just, those were the questions that you had?
Yeah.
Okay, let me, before we, let me make sure we got all of the opponents in, Larry, before we ask you to respond, but I think the attorney for the developer is here, so I think he'll be able to answer those questions for you in a minute.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure there were no other opponents who wanted to be heard. Are there any other opponents who want to be heard on items 14 through 18? If not, the public hearing is closed. Larry?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road. It's my understanding that the engineers Olson and Associates, Luke Weatherly in particular, met with Mr. Tollison a couple of weeks ago. At that time, we did not own or control the property. My client has now since closed on that property July 7th, so it will be maintained in a much better condition now. It's expected that the grading will start here in probably late August, early September. The trees that he's talking about will be removed. I think it's contemplated in the grading plan that the trees will be removed. As far as the fence, it's my understanding that it's up to the individual homeowners. These lots are for sale lots, so if an individual homeowner wants to place a fence on their side of the property, they certainly can, but I don't believe there's any intention to do build an exterior fence along the entire north side of our development. So hopefully that answers Mr. Tollison's questions.
Okay. Does that, does that answer your question?
Well, I was just, I was just wondering.
You have to come back down to the microphone and identify yourself again for the record.
Just your name.
Just your name.
Jim Tollison, and I'm just wondering, who's gonna be responsible for mowing the weeds until the houses are built?
Mr. Jovan.
Because I'm, I'm talking about, oh, probably, probably a third acre that's, you know, is high.
Okay, all right. He'll answer that for you. Mr. Jovan.
Well, all of the existing weeds and such will be removed as part of the grading process, so Real Growth LLC, which is my client, they just acquired the property, so the developer at all times during construction and prior to the sale of any of these lots will be required and will maintain the property so that they control the noxious weeds and things like that. But he is correct, until July 7th, it was not a town developer that owned that property and probably didn't maintain it very well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry, if you can come back up.
Sure.
I've known Mr. Tollison for a long time, and he's reasonable, and when can the, when can the weeds be attacked? How soon?
I will find out, and I, but I, my expectation, understanding is gonna be very soon because the grading's going to start as soon as possible. There was a grading plan that they were revising as of last week, and my understanding that the grading plan now, I think, is in final form, so it's, the anticipated start date for the grading is as soon as possible, but probably in August of some kind, sometime, so, but I will.
Can we, can we get the weeds done within seven days?
I'll check and I'll ask.
Okay.
But that's not unreasonable in the sense that the weeds have been there for quite some time prior to the time my client bought the property.
Okay. Jim, just stay in your chair, but Larry's real good at making sure that the council is happy on these, and if he says he'll get after those weeds, he will. Okay. Move the approval.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve items 14 through 18. There are no further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fourteen through eighteen are passed six to zero. Item number 19, ordinance to repeal the major commercial corridor overlay district for the property located at 3603 North 222nd Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 19, and no further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nineteen is passed six to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held August 2nd, agenda items number 20 through 21 should be laid over three weeks to August 16th for publication and public hearing. Item number 22, resolution special use permit application for a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a community commercial district for the property located at 13927 S Street is hereby approved, and PNI is directed to issue the necessary permits. Therefore, A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 19, and no further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-two is passed six to zero. Liquor, item number 23, Jefferson's Restaurant, 17520 Wright Street, Suite 101, request permission for change of location to present Class C liquor license to 510 South 13th Street. We have a request from the applicant to lay this over two weeks to August 9th.
Second, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three is laid over two weeks. Item number 24 is draft house, or the original draft house, 12411 West Center Road, Suites 101 and 102, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. You have a communications opposing, and you have communications from the applicant requesting to an amendment to remove the outdoor area.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Tom Baldwin, 5503 Beachwood Terrace in Western Moyn, Iowa.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Uh, Mr., there's nobody that's got a light on.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Dr. Thompson.
I'm watching. Push it. You're pushing it, it's not. You can call me Mr. No Light.
All right, Doc.
Um, the fact that the opposition isn't here tells me that maybe the opposition just wasn't that strong. Usually if we have somebody opposing, they'll, they'll come and state their case, especially since people know that I like, I like the win the argument on the floor. That's just the way I do things, so in light of that, I'm gonna go ahead and move the approval.
Of the amendment?
Of the amendment.
Yes, yeah, to remove the outdoor area.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the amendment on item 24. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-four is passed as amended, six to zero. Item number 25, for Gazelle's Pizza, 16909 Lakeside Hills, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jeff Daley, 14610 Ames Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 25. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-five is adopted, six to zero. Item number 26 is Hilton Garden Inn, 1005 Dodge Street, request permission to appoint Jason Smith manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 26 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 25. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-six is approved, six to zero. Consent agenda, any mayor of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda, which will be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda item number 27 was held on July 19th, 2016. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven is passed six to zero.
The public hearing, the public hearings on agenda items numbers 28 through 57 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
I'd like to address item number 32.
Thank you.
My name is Howard Caslow. I reside at 2403 South 102nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, which is within the road maintenance district that this relates to. I'm here on my behalf and on behalf of a number of the other residents who've expressly authorized me to speak on their behalf. All of us are very much in favor of this resolution. We hope that you will support it. In the ten and a half months since we filed our petitions to form this road maintenance district, the streets have further deteriorated to the point where it is truly a public safety concern for automobiles, pedestrians, kids on their bicycles. It is dangerous. We need to get this construction completed this fall before the project, before we get into another winter. There are some other folks from our area that also are supporters here. If they would just raise their hands to indicate their support, I do want to just express my thanks to the council for your assistance and support for this road maintenance district and for your willingness to address the whole issue of streets in Omaha, Nebraska. So I urge you and encourage you to adopt this resolution so we can hopefully see some actual construction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Sokka Jazinski. I reside at 2324 South 102nd Street. I signed a petition to create the road maintenance district. One of my objectives, I'm here with my husband, one of our objectives was the improvement of the drainage. The, the state of the street is very, very, it's very damaged, however, the drainage is even worse. We reside on one side of the street that receives most of the water, and so part of our objective was to have improvement, the order, improvement of this situation. The ordinance, as I've read through them, one of the things that it describes is the reestablishment of drainage. At this point, I don't have an understanding whether this occurs or not as part of the improvement. My understanding, based on conversation between my husband, and he can spend more time describing the conversation, but based on that conversation between my husband and a city engineer, there's no, there's no improvements planned on the drainage side. To me, that is dissatisfying, obviously, because it means that one of the objectives that I had when I signed this petition is not going to be achieved. At this point, I don't have any written information of what the improvement really entails, and at that point cannot really have an opinion whether it will or not. So I'm at this point voicing my concern that the improvements are not in satisfying the ordinance that was shown, and I would vote, I'm opposed to this.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Same item.
Kathleen Mitchell, 2501 South 102nd Street. We also, my husband and I also signed the petition requesting the road maintenance district be established, but in further conversations, we are, again, we are also concerned about the drainage issue and the lack of curbs in our neighborhood. The way the, the way the road is set up right now, it's a very informal type road. It is very dangerous because of the potholes and the irregularities in the street. There are no curbs, and there is absolutely no drainage. What our neighbors have done as a temporizing measure over the years is to put culverts underneath their driveways, which further diverts the water in these, you know, during a downpour, diverts the water into our property, which has caused in our home a great deal of destruction and damage in our garage.
You are talking about item 32.
I am talking about item 32.
Okay, thank you.
The reason I'm giving you this information is because our understanding, after further discussions and a community meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago, is that the measure that is being proposed right now is to put a temporizing measure or a Band-Aid, basically, over the top, which is not a permanent repair to the street. It will not bring the street into the maintenance of Omaha, the city of Omaha. It's just to put blacktop over the top, and that will not take care of the drainage issue. And so within a couple of years, we're going to have the same situation with further degradation of the road. We are tenant, we are, we are landowners, we are, you know, we have children, and we plan to be in the neighborhood for quite a long time, and we would like to have a permanent solution rather than a temporizing measure.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have someone from Public Works at least attempt to address the issue that's been brought forth?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Again, what we're doing in this particular area is essentially a maintenance district, which means that it's just redoing the surface. If it was a street improvement district, which is a concrete street with curb and gutter and storm sewers, it would address the issue associated with, from the opponents relative to drainage, but again, this is only redoing the surface for this particular area.
Will that, this issue, the drainage issue, will that still be a major topic of concern?
If there's, our, our construction engineer, I know, has discussed with a number of individuals in this particular area with regards to specific concerns that they might have with their property. I don't know if these individuals have actually discussed that with them, but again, this is not necessarily taking care of the drainage in that particular roadway maintenance district. Essentially, it is addressing the surface of the road itself.
Will that, this issue, the drainage issue, will that still be a major topic of concern?
If there's, our, our construction engineer, I know, has discussed with a number of individuals in this particular area with regards to specific concerns that they might have with their property. I don't know if these individuals have actually discussed that with them, but again, this is not necessarily taking care of the drainage in that particular roadway maintenance district. Essentially, it is addressing the surface of the road itself. If there was a desire to go with a street improvement district, which addresses all drainage, that would be significantly more expensive than what's being proposed here.
The, the concrete street with, or with curbs is what you're telling me? That would be significantly much more expensive?
Yes, because again, that is the standard that has been used in the city of Omaha for a number of years. So, these particular areas potentially have ditches in them. Obviously, they have culverts, which is carrying water in the ditches underneath their driveways. And that, when you put in a standard street, the water is not in ditches, it is in storm sewers that are back a curb.
I know we've had several meetings with several groups on this, this particular issue, road issue. Was this addressed at those meetings, the choice of going, which route to go, the asphalt or the concrete?
Yeah, anytime that we get a request for some type of a district, we give them the options relative to what that might be, which includes both the maintenance district and the street improvement district.
Okay, and if you can recall, 32 was the choice by the majority of the people to go the route that we are looking at today?
Again, this, this is essentially close to one of the final steps that have been taken relative to this particular effort. And so, yes, we've gone through all of the legal requirements as far as establishing the roadway maintenance district, which has been approved. This essentially is the final step for getting the work done, which is a change order with a contractor to perform that work.
One more question. Now, I'm thinking of the cost. Do the individuals who will be affected by this process, if we vote on it today, do they have a pretty fair idea what the cost will be?
Yes, because the cost that is being approved today by change order is significantly less than what was originally estimated for that particular area. And so, the, the final step will be, once the project is completed, the final cost will be established. Then there will be essentially a document provided in front of the Board of EAK and finally, the council that will essentially do the assessment to the individual property owners.
Okay. Is my understanding, because this has been a concern by a number of the people, does it look like the city will share any of the costs?
This particular item is, doesn't have any cost sharing in it. It's only items 31 and 33 where the council has approved cost sharing. Now, the mayor has indicated her support, which was, you know, provided last week when she provided information relative to the budget, but she has indicated support for providing maybe some assistance to these particular areas.
Okay, so I just want to put it on record. The mayor is supporting, sharing the cost? Is that what I'm hearing from you? Because I, this has to be made very clear to the individuals, so that will help.
Yeah, I guess I will defer to Cassie. She can address that specifically from the mayor's office.
Cassie, would you please come up?
Cassie, Pavin, Mayor's Office. As you know, we had a very extensive discussion last week as it relates to roadway maintenance districts as well as street improvement districts. One of the things that was discussed were those that were currently in the process, this being one of those areas that was currently in the process. There will be a letter that the mayor has provided to, to the council this morning. It was a template of a letter that will be going out, not only for this one, but for another one as well, that will be outlining our cost sharing of this particular project. So, there will be a cost sharing from the city for this particular project. And then that resolution, that will eventually have to come before this council. This, what is before you today, as Director Stube had mentioned, is purely to get that work done.
And I appreciate, but I'm going to run this one more time. What you're telling me, that, that is our intent.
There will be a letter that goes out from the mayor's office today to all the residents affected within this roadway maintenance district that outlines the city's cost sharing.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Cassie.
You good, Mr. Pauls?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Mr. Jerome?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I think what we're hearing today from the people who came down here to share with us their concerns on this particular item 32, is what we're seeing in places around the city that have these streets, and the problem isn't going to go away. They're 100% accurate in what they're saying. Unless you address the drainage, you build the street to city standards, this is a Band-Aid and these people are just going to be back. And with the freeze-thaw cycles in our city, with inadequate drainage, which then is further undermining the road, let alone your garage, you can expect in the not-too-distant future, the street will be cracking and breaking up and will be back down here. So, I'll, as we wait for this grand vision of what this policy is going to be, it appears there's another precedent that's become policy with regard to these roadway improvement districts. And that is, well, let's offer to pay half the price, because if there's enough concerns and objections proposed, then, you know, throwing some money at this in a temporary fashion will hopefully appease everyone to such a level that, you know, they still get something that they may be willing to live with in the short term. But in the long term, the city, the city councils are going to be in this position. I have far fewer of these in District 3 than Districts 5 and 6 have, and District 2 and 4. But I just, to me, it seems as though we're not proceeding in a very careful, deliberate fashion with sound policy decisions, that it's piecemeal and it's just not very well thought out. And in the end, it's just going to lead to greater frustration. And so, I just don't, it's on the consent agenda. I just, I'll be supporting this because this is what the vast majority of people want, but it's, is fully cognizant of the fact that this isn't going to solve your problem. And, and we need this much more permanent solution. I'm glad there are people working on it, and it's only been a week, so it's not fair to expect they'll have it done yet. But I look forward to something being produced, telling us what it is. I mean, in Public Works Committee this morning, we talked to Director Stube about it, and, you know, he's interested in this policy too. But City Legal says now that there's been enough of these 50% offers, that this precedent now is, for future people, if they don't get the 50%, then they're going to be entitled to ask for that 50%. So, it's a mess. It seems as though, rather than get the grand solution, we're still with Band-Aids. And that seems to be okay with us today. But another thing we're doing is we have a proposed $3 million tax cut for property taxes, just a couple of days after there's announcement of a $250 million problem with these substandard streets. And over probably 300 million infrastructure needs, besides that, that we get from the engineering community in Omaha, and regular street infrastructure needs. So, if it's between 300 and a half a billion in needs, and we're now offering 50% on this from the general fund, then why aren't we doing anything in terms of really meaningfully addressing what our infrastructure needs are, rather than discounting money to people to the tune of 20 bucks per $100,000 home? So, I'm just going to continue to say, as we prepare for the budget discussions, that the people who come in and say, "We need a long-term fix," are absolutely right. These little Band-Aids will not fix the problem. And it doesn't help, only hurts, when you diminish the fund by 300 million in hand, when your infrastructure needs are so massive in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So, it's, it's a frustrating situation you're in. I completely agree. But we're just on the front end of trying to form something and waiting really for the mayor, as she announces with Public Works, what this grand plan is going to be, other than putting a million more in street maintenance next year and some CIP dollars to come, that presumably may be in part available for this. To me, when there's such a massive, massive cost in a present terrible condition of the roads, it, to me, it's, it's a Band-Aid and it's not even a good one at that. It's one of the ones that gets wet and falls right off, so.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, because I, I might have misunderstood what Mr. Kratz said earlier today. I'm wondering, Mr. Kratz, if you could clarify, by the city being willing to cover up to 50% of these projects, what that means moving forward in the future? Does that create a problem for future policy? Could you just clarify that?
Sure. Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I think what I was trying to say earlier is that, I guess, over the years, as I've been here, as we do certain things and we do them routinely, they tend to become a policy. And it happens, not necessarily from a legal standpoint, but from the standpoint that politicians will be lobbied to keep doing it for a similar situation. And after a while, that becomes a policy.
Okay, so, it doesn't mean that if we approve this today, that we are legally, we will be legally mandated, so to speak, to continue to do this for every project in the future?
We would not be legally mandated. Although, I say that with, there could be an argument made that if we do it consistently with a lot of different projects and don't do one in the future, that somehow we should be legally obligated. I don't know what that point is and what time we get to that point, but I could see such an argument at some time.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just wanted to be clear, because I think sometimes these arguments, this project, I think Mr. Caslow said 10, you've been working on this 10 and a half months, I believe, is, is what you said. And so, this is where all of the neighbors, this isn't something that the city has said has to be done. This is something that the neighbor had determined that they wanted done. And in those meetings, I assume it was discussed, and I don't know, Mr. Caslow, would you mind coming back up, just so I can, I don't want to make assumptions since I wasn't at your meetings.
Sure. Howard Caslow.
And did you discuss the street improvement districts, doing the concrete and the drainage and the curbs?
A, a public meeting was held inviting all of the members of residents of the district. The Public Works Department called the meeting and it was attended by a substantial number of people. And they did indeed discuss the alternative and what the cost would be. It was roughly five times what the cost will be for just doing the asphalt. I think the idea that this is a two- or three-year Band-Aid is really not correct. I mean, Mr. Stube may want to comment on that, but certainly, that's not what the city engineers told us. They said that the useful life of this resurfacing could be as much as 15 to 20 years and possibly longer. I've lived on my home on this street for 26 years. It has never been resurfaced. And until the city stopped its maintenance program three years ago, it was a passable street. The city stopped maintaining it and now it's a disaster. I mean, we formed the district, we did everything we're supposed to do, we get to this point. All this is, all you're voting on today is a change order to a contract to allow our street to get improved. That's what we asked for and that's what I'm asking you to do. I mean, the issue of the streets, Mr. Jerome, absolutely, it's critical. It should have been addressed years ago. But, you know, I, I don't know that you can make this particular project the fall guy for, for the problem. And I, I just truly would ask you to let us get this done. We've been working, I turned in the petitions last September. It's now going to be August. It's time. And we can't go through another winter with our streets the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you. The gentleman that was just up here, my neighborhood, we had ours done in 2013, so we're, we're on our 13th, no, 2003, I'm sorry. And we're on our 13th year, to just give you a little reference. We are at the end of our wear and tear, so there are areas, half of our area, we're not going to get patched, and the other half of the area still. So, that's just to kind of give you a recent idea of what you're dealing with. I, I want you to know that it might not be 20, but it's definitely not 3 either, so, if you can kind of gauge that. And then, Mr. Kratz, according to the definition you gave, if we keep doing something over and over, then it sets a precedence, and then that precedence can become a, a, a policy. Is that correct?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I say that again from my experience that I've seen over the years. And, and a lot of that becomes policy simply by political pressure to the politicians, with all due respect, that if you do it for XYZ, why not do it for me?
And the reason I'm asking is because for years, we, we patched. We went in and filled potholes and we patched the unimproved streets. And I thought that that was a policy we had. But there was an individual from Public Works, he's not here in the building, in the room at the time, but about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, he barked at me that that's not policy. So, again, it's important that we're all sending the same message, because sometimes the citizens are thinking that there's two and three messages simultaneously being sent by city. And so, we, from my perspective, we have had a policy to patch these streets, and now the policy has changed. And maybe that's a little wordsmithing, but the person who barked at me felt that, that it wasn't policy, when in reality, it really was a policy. Now, we're switching policies and then those policies are under review right now as to what's good and what's bad. But again, it's, it's important that we don't send mixed signals to a public, especially when, when we don't quite understand it, then of course, they're not going to understand it either. So, that's just editorial. But I, I agree with you in that if you do something for a long period of time, it becomes policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Mr. Jerome?
Yes, Mr. Caswell, I didn't think I said I was going to vote against this proposal, so you're making you the fall guy is a little overstated in my estimation. You're, you're a skilled advocate from your years in the law practice, so tip of the cap for you, for your advocacy. The, what, the other point I was trying to make is that, and I'm fully aware of Mr. Thompson's road, is they really, you know, they don't last as long as people think they do. And the reason why is the very points that the, the people who had been supporting this say, is because they, the water gets under them and they are undermined, and they're not very thick. And so, in terms of the precedence, though, for future roadway maintenance districts coming in and asking for money, in my opinion, having a very valid reason for it, are things like today, at 7:20 in the morning, the council was emailed by the mayor's office with this magnanimous gesture that there's now this 50% offer that would be sent out to the roadway maintenance district and a street improvement district that came in. And so, the point to be made there was that when you do enough of these 50% offers, that if you don't do it for the next one, is it fair to those people not to get it? And how then is it reasonable to expect that if asked, this council shouldn't approve it or face a district judge to explain why we did it for so many others and not the one that then came after that one? So, I think when you have, I don't know, Mr. Stube, are you still there? Do you know how many now we've approved? With, if this latest one gets offered, as though the email said, there was 113th Street, right?
There, there are three that are on the council agenda today to actually start the work. Two of those three have actually come in front of this body and been approved for 50% cost share.
And then there's the email this morning, alluding to another offer for 50%? On one of these RMDs?
Yeah, I think the intent was, is that this particular RMD that is item 32, and then there's also a street improvement district that's currently being worked on. In fact, we've received bids recently in the Poppleton, 78th Street area, that potentially would also be one of the ones that the mayor would indicate would get some, some 50% cost share on.
And is Poppleton the one that Mr. Simon lives on that had the lawsuit?
No.
That's another one? Okay. So, I don't know if there's, and we did 113th, so that one plus these three?
No. 113th is in this mix. That's, yes.
Okay. So, we're up to four, not five? Or three, not four?
We are at two.
Going to three?
Potentially, a third would be the item 32. And then a fourth could be the Poppleton area, which is a street improvement district, which is both Poppleton and 78th Street.
And who makes the decision on whether there's this 50% cost share offer? Is it Public Works or is it the mayor?
Well, I think in the past, the mayor, I think, originally submitted for the 113th Street, I believe, council originally submitted for 95th Circle. And the, the item 32 that's on the agenda today, the mayor's indicated her support for that one. And then also, the Poppleton, which is another, again, another one that has gone through the process of establishing some type of a district.
So, how do you budget for these things?
Typically, the, the budget for these is, is through the Special Assessment Fund. And so, on an annual basis, there's monies that go into the Special Assessment Fund and then it comes out of that for these types of improvements.
So, that's where the 50% that your department's cost sharing will come from, is the Special Assessment Fund?
Bob Stube, that is correct. The Special Assessment Fund is the one that is being used as the funding source to actually get these projects funded. And then, again, the assessment would go through the Board of EAK, then would essentially then reimburse the city for that 50% that is the responsibility of the property owners.
Okay. Thank you. Now, ma'am, you have been very patient standing, and I assume it's not for exercise, if you want to say something.
Plenty of, plenty of those. Yeah, I just wanted to.
Well, you have to say your name again.
Silka Josinski. And the address as well? 2324 South 102nd Street. I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made. First of all, it was, the petition was by the majority and not all property owners. That's, that's, just to clarify that. And also, from an informational perspective, I must, must say that I am very dissatisfied with the information we've received at this point. Yes, there was a meeting scheduled, which we, for example, were unable to attend simply because the notice was way too short for some of us that have a full schedule and need to think, move things around. So, we didn't have the information. And also, I would prefer to have information in writing, so I have actually the ability to read it a couple more times and have an educated, or make an educated decision. So, the only thing at this point that we have had is a conversation with the, with the city engineer for my husband. And it sounds like, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure who made the distinction, it sounds like we signed the wrong petition, meaning that we should have looked to get a street improvement as opposed to rain maintenance improvement. Frankly, that's something that I wasn't aware of, that we did not going to have, that we did not, are not going to have the choice between the two and what that actually means. And also, I was led also by what the ordinance actually says, which is re-establishment of drainage, which was, of course, one of the objectives that HIA had when signing that, that petition. And there is no drainage. So, re-establishment would be, or improvement of the non-existent would be helpful. And we're in the same camp. Our garage is generally full after a downpour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a couple of statements, and then, you know, we can take the vote. Or if anyone else wants to add anything, they certainly can. Ms. Paven, let me, can I ask you real quickly? Is the policy that you all are looking at, because an issue that I am going to have is I have a number of those in my district, and I am going to want to know why we're not doing at least 50% when it comes up. So, I'm going to want to know that. That's going to happen, I'm going to want to know. Secondly, are we doing anything, especially in the areas where people are more financially challenged than other places? I hate using the term "poor." People who are more financially challenged, are we looking at a policy that will address that as well?
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. I'm a little unclear to your first question. So, I'm going to answer it, and if I'm going down the wrong path, correct me.
No, 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 no. Yeah, that's not a question.
Okay.
The only question that I have is, are we, when you're in your policy discussions, are you looking at, are you looking at areas where, you know, where people are a little bit more financially challenged, but their road needs improvement?
Absolutely. You know, as we look at this, we realize not every area is made up of the same makeup. We fully recognize that there are portions of our community that have more of an economic hardship than maybe others. And so, we are looking at how this, as this policy continues to unfold, what that looks like as it relates to those areas that might have an economic hardship, whether it's basing that on per median income that comes out from the census and adjusted accordingly. But yes, we are taking that into account and looking at how we can address those as well.
Yeah, the first part of my question was a statement. I'm going to be sending some people.
Just wanted to make sure, because you said first and then second.
Yeah, people are putting together a road improvement district, and.
Correct.
You know, I'm going to want to see, or at least have an understanding as to why some things happen and some things don't.
Yeah.
Do we know when we're going to, do we have any idea? Back to the policy question again. Do we know when we're going, do you know when that policy, or when we're looking at, might be finalizing that policy?
Well, like I told you this morning when we were talking on another subject, I do not own a crystal ball, contrary to popular belief by some. If I did, it would make things a lot easier in my world. But, you know, we're working on it. There's still some legal stuff that we're trying to work through with law as it relates to making sure we get that language correct. You know, it is our intent to get something to you sooner rather than later. If I hesitate to put a day on it.
I got it.
Because as soon as that hour, you know, hits, then someone's going to say, where's it at? But I would say it's coming up quicker than what most would think.
Yeah, I wouldn't say a drop, I wasn't looking for a drop in date. I was looking for whether we do it this year or not, or.
Oh, yeah. Definitely this year.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you. No further lights. Items 28 through 57. No one's moved or approved?
They moved.
Moved and seconded to approve items 28 through 57, and no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Paul. Thompson. Garnett. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
28 through 57 are adopted to 6 to 0. Ordinance on final reading, item 58. Ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 19, to provide the applicability of the Restaurant Occupation Tax to certain food vendors to clarify the enforcement of the Restaurant Occupation Tax.
Public hearing was held. Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. This certainly has, this particular item has got a lot of press, some legal wranglings that we're still working through. And I just feel that we should have a full council vote on this, even though we may know how one of our colleagues is going to vote in advance and has made that public as well. But I have lost count of the number of times that people have come in front of us and said, "Slow this thing down." And I, I'm not one that usually jumps at that opportunity, especially if we've been working on something for years. Now, this has not been the case here. So, I just think it's important enough to have a full council vote on this particular aspect, on the restaurant occupation tax. So, I would make a motion to lay over two weeks.
Second. Mr., oh, you've already spoken. Anyone, there's no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to lay over for two weeks. Roll call.
Milton. Paul. Thompson. Garnett. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
58 is laid over two weeks to August 9. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the third reading and public hearing on agenda items 59 through 61 shall be held on August 9. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, third reading on agenda items number 62 through 70 shall be held on August 9. The public hearing on these items are today. Item 62, ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley, South 38th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 62 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none of there any opponents. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
63, ordinance extending the limits of the city over certain lands in Douglas County, located southwest of 156 and Q Streets, Autumn Grove and adjacent areas, SID 431.
Public hearing on agenda items number 63 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. I have some remarks, but I'm actually going to make my remarks regarding 63 through 69, and then be available to answer any other questions you might have as it relates to agenda items, oh, well, 63 through 69. But I'll just make them all at once rather than repeating myself, if that works for the council today. Before you today is the proposed 2016 annexation package, which was unanimously approved by the planning board on July 6. This package accomplishes the goals that are historically used when proposing annexation. Those goals are to eliminate the islands, that they must be revenue positive for the city, and that it does not compromise public safety. Before getting into the details of this year's package, I'd first like to take a step back and explain how the city determines whether or not annexation is feasible. The city starts with four criteria. Is it an island, which are those areas that are completely surrounded by the city? Does the area have a tax levy less than or equal to 60? Does the area have a debt ratio of 5% or less? And then, we also look at whether or not there's retail within the area. It should be noted that an area only has to meet one of those four criteria to move forward in the process. Once we have that list, we then start looking at the area's net debt as well as whether or not it is contiguous to city limits. And then, we look at those areas, and the departments take a further, more extensive look at each area. We take a look at everything from streets, what it would cost for city services, parks. Are there issues within the area? Do they have upcoming projects within the area? If they're going to, if the SID or the area is going to take on a massive street project or sidewalk project, or do anything with the park? So, we take a look at all of those, and then, from there, it starts to become a big puzzle. Some areas might be positive, some areas might be negative. But we put together ultimately a package that meets the initial three goals of annexation that I previously mentioned. So, to illustrate, this year, we have approximately 160 SIDs within our jurisdiction. Of those 160, we made the first cut down to about 75. From there, we started refining even more. That went down to about 25 to 30. I think the actual number is somewhere around 28. And then, from there, it was putting it all together to make sure it matched. And what was before you today is seven areas that equal 786 acres. They are all, both, they are financially healthy as well as physically healthy. There's four parks within those areas. Those four parks are approximately 26 acres in size. The annexation package would bring in 6,052 people per the 2010 census, and it would maintain Omaha as one of the top 40 cities in the United States. The city would see an increase of 456 million in new valuation. And valuation's important, as this fall, the mayor and other city officials will meet with bond raters. And one of the items that they look at is our valuation growth. And are we maintaining a positive growth to be able to look upon favorably as we look at our bond ratings? This package, as I previously mentioned, is financially healthy. All areas are financially positive for the city over a 10-year financial projection. Has a 10-year debt ratio of 2.27%. And over the 10-year analysis that we conduct, approximately $24 million in new property tax revenue will come in, about $162,000 in sales tax revenue would come in. The cost of city services is about $16.9 million. The total debt that we would be assuming is $13 million. And that would leave us with a 10-year net balance of a little over $4 million. The average age of the SIDs in this package is approximately 21 years in age. And all areas that are in front of you today for the annexation package do see a property tax decrease. The average decrease in these areas, while it varies from area to area, the average is about $460 per $100,000 of valuation. More importantly, public safety will not be compromised with this annexation package. These areas are currently served by OFD, and they have low 911 call volumes. There was a little over 1,000, 911 calls made in 2015, with only eight of those being priority one calls for police. OFD will see an increase in sworn strength through the addition of officers in the 2017 budget. Their sworn strength will be 856. And by adding an additional four more through this annexation package, we will increase that to 860 for 2017. That will be the highest number of sworn officers that the city has ever seen. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office will also continue to provide service, just as OPD has in these areas in the past. As it relates to public safety and police staffing, there's a couple of things I'd like to point out. With the proposed increase in officers through the 2017 budget and the annexation package, there would be 1.91 officers per 1,000 residents. The gold standard, if you will, is two per 1,000. Even with the annexations that have taken place over the last few years, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office has not reduced the number of staff, and they have an approximately sworn strength of 130 officers. Again, at no other time has Omaha had more police presence available to them than they will through these measures. These areas will immediately receive all services such as fire and police protection, solid and yard waste collection, street maintenance, snow removal. Those services will be provided upon the effective date of annexation. If approved, that effective date would be August 24. Finally, I'd like to point out that SIDs and annexation have played an important role in the development of the city of Omaha. They're a highly flexible and functional vehicle for development of new commercial, residential, and mixed-use areas. From a developer's standpoint, they serve as a means of financing the costs for new infrastructure, such as water and sewer, roads, and sidewalks. From the city's standpoint, SIDs provide for future growth, one that is orderly, in conformance with building codes and standards, and consistent with the city's master plan. The intent behind an SID is that eventually, it will be annexed. To be clear, our long-term ability to adequately fund shared priorities, such as public safety and street resurfacing and maintenance, and create opportunities for exciting developments in our urban core, depends in part on continued economic growth. I urge you to adopt the annexation package on the vote on August 9, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 60.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Ms. Paven, I don't know if you want to answer or Mr. Stube, but in terms of the Public Works' assessment of the subdivisions that SIDs are coming to the city, what analysis was done in terms of how many additional lane miles, the condition of the roads, needs for equipment and personnel to service them?
So, there's a number of different things that we do, Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. Just for the record, to make sure, do that properly. There's a number of different things that we do. We do a lot of behind-the-scenes work with the SID engineers as it relates to any future needs that would take place. As we continue to look at areas, obviously, we have mapping tools that can help us figure out number of lane miles. We have the mapping tools to figure out the number of households within each area, so that way, we know what it's going to look like in terms of solid waste collection and recycling collection. So, we do that. We also do do physical assessments. We do go out, we take a look to see what sorts of conditions they're in. And through that evaluation process, that's part of what we look at when we determine if it's physically healthy or not. If we're out there and we're having those conversations, not only with the SID engineers or the SID attorneys, but upon our assessment, that's where a lot of coordination goes into place. So, in previous years, there have been some SIDs that are going through, per se, a panel replacement project, and they know they're going to be going through that. So, we coordinate with them and make sure that those repairs take place, whether it's prior to annexation or during annexation. Oftentimes, they've also had contracts that they've put into place for such repairs, sometimes unbeknownst to us, sometimes we're aware of that. But we've had those, and those actually might be taking place after the effective date of annexation, but we allow them to move forward because ultimately, someone would have to make the repair. So, there is a number of different things we do. It's not a clear-cut yes or no. There's a lot of work that goes into it. There's a lot of, not just physical time, but a lot of conversations and a lot of back and forth with the engineers and the attorneys.
So, with police, you had a specific number that you're allocating an additional four officers to cover annexation for 2017 budget. I was wondering if there's an additional allocation within Public Works and street maintenance for the street maintenance needs?
The cost to serve those areas, so that $16.9 million in cost of city services for all areas over 10 years, the cost to serve them for maintenance, for snow removal, for trash pickup, that is all calculated within that number.
So, in answer to the question.
We accommodate those costs within our calculation for cost of city services.
Okay, but you don't have here today a number for whether there will be any additional street maintenance workers in the 2017 budget of the 15 additional?
Well, I believe in the 2017 budget that was proposed to you, there was an addition of 16 on street maintenance workers. And again, those street maintenance workers would accompany all costs associated with any work across the city. So, if it were in with, within one of these areas, they would also take care of that as well.
But to answer my question, there's no specific additional?
There's not a call-out line item. But again, I would like to reiterate, the cost to serve these areas for street maintenance, for snow removal, for city services, is embedded within that $16.9 million cost that I have said.
So, why is there an additional, separate number for additional police, but not, why is the street maintenance all bundled into what the total budgetary numbers are rather than actually specific personnel?
If you're asking about the semantics of how we call out police versus how we call out street maintenance, again, we like to highlight public safety. And so, we like to highlight that through this, we can add an additional four officers. So, that's why I'm telling you that way. But again, and I think Director Stube has something he wants to say about this, but again, all of those costs are bundled within that $16.9 million that covers street repairs, street maintenance, snow removal, garbage collection. All of those items, maintenance in parks, maintenance in public common space, all of those areas. That is what that $16.9 million figures in.
Mr. Stube, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just from the perspective of Bob Stube, Public Works, from the perspective of snow removal, that would be something that typically, over the last six or seven years, is a contracted service. So, those contractors that may be plowing snow in those particular areas, not sure if it's a county or if it's contracted workers that are doing it. But that typically would be handled by an outside service. And so, we would have money in the budget for that particular service.
So, with regard to these proposed annexed areas, then, do you know here, as you sit here today, will these all be contracted snow plowing services?
Yeah, again, it's our goal, when we put out the advertisement for contractors, is to get as many contractors as possible to handle the snow removal by outside services so that we can get them in there on a timely fashion. And so, we would do the same thing in this particular case. And so, if there's not enough contractors that would be available, then we would augment that with our own forces.
And last year, you had challenges in getting the number of contractors you had hoped to afford to package. Is that correct?
Again, we've increased the number of contractors from six up to, I think, close to 20. Again, we provide opportunities for contractors out there that are willing to do the work. Some do it as part of kind of an offset for lawn service. Others act as kind of brokers and hire a number of individuals to actually do that particular work.
So, I had a meeting here today, this morning, with someone who used to be a foreman in the street maintenance district that said in the. in the street maintenance district that said in the, in the years gone by, an annexation package is, it was actually part of his duties, he'd have to go out to the proposed annexed areas, and he would have to survey the streets. He'd have to come up with a lane mileage. He'd have to then make a recommendation for how many personnel that he thought should be added to cover the areas to be annexed, as well as the equipment that they would need in terms of rigs for potholes and other things. And I'm hearing that's not done here. It's done in a total, what it's estimated this will cost. So, Mr. Stube, to the people who live in these areas, I think I'm hearing you say, you propose to have their streets plowed by contractors. If you don't get enough contractors to bid, then they can hope for one of the orange city trucks who will actually plow. But in terms of the potholes and the other street maintenance needs, sewer cloggings and things like that, will that have to be addressed within your proposed 2017 street maintenance budget, which does include an additional number of slots? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Bob Stube Public Works. So yes, you know, as you know, that the mayor's budget that was presented included a number of individuals within street maintenance, and that's for not only snow removal opportunities, but also for pavement maintenance, cracked ceiling, those types of things. The other thing that we have an opportunity to do is, on an annual basis, is to look to either seasonal employees or part-time employees that we bring onboard that, again, augment our normal full-time staff.
And I thought there was an earlier meeting with the Public Works Committee where there's been challenging, challenges to the department in terms of filling those part-time slots. Has that been remedied?
We always have a struggle with hiring people. Part of it is, is that, like a lot of other companies out there that have needs for CDL drivers, we also have that challenge. But we do provide an opportunity within Street Maintenance Division and also within our Sewer Maintenance Division that we'll hire people onboard. We will train them to get their CDL license, and if they achieve that, then typically, they can come on as part-time employees.
Thank you. Now let's talk about parks, and maybe you're the person or...
Sure. Can I make one clarification, though? Because I think you might have misinterpreted one of the things I said, because you said it was just on a cost. We have to go out and actually calculate lane miles and do all that stuff to figure out costs. That's how we determine a cost.
I think I heard you said...
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We have the GIS that does that.
We can help that, but again, we do have people that go out. So I just wanted to make sure that was crystal clear.
Okay. Of these SIDs, these subdivisions, parks and public property, we've had issues in the past when we've done annexations where the people said, "Hey, our common areas had always been mowed, and now what's going to happen to us?" So has there been an assessment done in terms of the SIDs coming in on this package? How many of them have these common area needs for mowed, to be mowed? Will it be contractors? And then with regard to the parks and park maintenance, I think you said 20-some acres of parks being added?
There's four parks with 26 acres. And if you really want to get into a lot more of the specifics, I'm sure Director Bench would be more than happy to go into some of that. However, I would say we feel that with the equipment that we've purchased, that we'll actually be able to help us with some of the additional employees that were brought on in previous years. The amount that is required underneath this annexation package can adequately be handled.
Okay, so...
The one distinction I would make, because where a lot of confusion oftentimes we find either after annexation packages, or we hear many years down the road, is there are subdivisions that have what I'll call really fancy entrances. So they might have special lightings or fountains, or they do a lot of planting of flowers and rock landscapes and all of that. Anything above and beyond that traditional maintenance, those upon annexation become the responsibility of the HOAs within that area. And that has been a longstanding practice within the city. But if you have additional questions about the maintenance personnel, I know Brooks back there and could answer very specific details, but yes, adequately between the four parks and the 26 acres, we can handle that.
Okay, no additional people needed. Same level of service for the parks?
Brooke.
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. Yes, we will add probably one or two seasonals for that. We've had that figured in. For us, this is a relatively small package, worth only having four smaller parks and only just a little over 20 acres. So with the over a million dollars worth of equipment that we've bought and purchased the last year and a half, we will easily be able to maintain these new parks.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Ms. Milton.
I have a question for Mr. Curtis. When you look over this annexation package, could you just give me your opinion of the financial stability and how the city works these things into their budget? Because I'm thinking that's probably what you do. How do you incorporate the annexation packages, the city services into the budget that you recommend?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Remember that when we do these packages, they carry their own separate and distinct budget. So this has its own budget with a cost for personnel. I think we have 3,000 per lane mile in this particular annexation package. That gets added to the 2017 budget that you were already considering on a separate path. So the two of those will be combined together, so this additional funding gets added to the 2017 budget.
So this funding isn't in the current copy of the budget that we received last week?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's the clarification that maybe we were looking for, that I think Councilman Jaram was looking for, that item-by-item, so that we can see that separately. Is that right?
She, Cassie, got it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No more lights. Next item.
Item 64, ordinance extending the limits to located southeast of 180th and F Street, Dickinson Landing, Wood Creek, SID 385.
Public hearing on agenda item number 64 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 65, ordinance extending the limits to southeast of 204th and Dodd Street, Elk Valley, SID 458.
Public hearing on agenda item number 65 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 66, ordinance extending the limits northwest of 180th and Harrison Street, Falcon Ridge, SID 434.
We've got to put some music to this. Public hearing on agenda item number 66 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
67, ordinance extending the limits northeast of 204th Street and Cumberland Drive, High Point and adjacent areas, SID 293.
Public hearing on agenda item 67 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions you might have.
See if you can do that in a higher pitch next...
Let me see what I can do.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
68, ordinance extending the limits northwest of 180th and Pacific Street, Pacific Ridge, SID 486.
Public hearing on agenda item number 68 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Is that octave better, Councilman Ray?
Thank you, that sounds better.
Perfect.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed.
69 is extending the limits northwest of 160th and Harrison Street, Western Oaks and adjacent areas, SID 389, and Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 69 is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Saying none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item number 70, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the City of Omaha and Douglas County joint application, the United States Department of Justice, for the Edwin Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant for law enforcement programs, crime prevention, education programs, prosecution and court programs, planning, evaluation, and technology improvement programs.
Public hearing on agenda item number 70 is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Excuse me. You've got one proponent.
I got one proponent. Oh, okay. Opponent?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, Luis Jimenez.
And you're on number 70?
70, yes.
Okay.
Luis Jimenez, 3126 Chicago Street. I'm actually not sure if I'm an opponent. I have a couple questions if I could take the time to get concrete answers. One thing is that I've been hearing differently. I don't know where that I can find the authoritative information about what kind of education a police officer is required to have in order to become part of the police force. I'm just wondering, do they, are they required to have college degree, like a four-year bachelor degree? Can anybody answer that?
We can, but it'd probably be better if it came from the police chief.
Well, I mean, I've looked through the websites and stuff, and I can't find anything. So you're saying that I need to get that information from the police chief?
Well, I'm saying that they would have a better idea of what they're asking for. I think that, I think they would have minimum standards, minimum requirements, but they...
Well, I thought I knew what the minimum requirement meant, but then I keep hearing something different. So I'm just trying to find that information.
Okay, but what does that have to do with 70?
Okay, well, because I'm trying to make up my mind of these certain things, such as crime prevention and education program. Does that include gun violence research? Can anybody answer that?
No.
It does not?
No, it's not. Gun violence, what, research?
Gun violence research.
No, I don't think it does.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? CNN, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 71, the City of Omaha comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015.
Public hearing on agenda item number 70? No, this is placed on file. Second roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
71 is placed on files. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the second reading of public hearing, agenda items number 72 through 76 shall be held on August 9th. Item 77 is an ordinance for redevelopment, financing, loan agreement with Atlanta Hall 1207 CAS to implement the 1207 CAS tax and refinancing project plan. We need a motion to set the second reading on August 9th and the third reading, public hearing on August 16th, to coincide with the preliminary and final plans.
Moved and seconded to, for, on item, to approve item 77.
To set the...
To do, to, oh, to set the second and third readings on the items. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Stand adjourned at 3:23.
I had a mess with you.[1744.61]